I call this meeting of the Winthrop School Board to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledger Leader.
As I say, we testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, our board members here, including our two student representatives. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are not.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of October 16, 2024, as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're having an Adam's vote, thank you very much. We'll head into the public comments section of our meeting. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom who would like to speak, we ask you to please step up to the podium. At this time, we'll close our first public comment section. Moving on to our reports, starting with our superintendent report with Dr. Foley.
Good evening, everyone. We want to begin the evening recognizing the huge success of the field hockey team, who has made history with their four straight state championship, an achievement that has never been done before here in Winthrop. To put this into perspective, the senior class has never lost a conference championship, regional final, or state championship throughout their entire high school career. Their unwavering dedication, teamwork, and excellence have set them apart from others. This remarkable achievement is a testament to the talent, leadership, and spirit of every player and coach. You have raised the bar here in Winthrop. You have shown all of us what is achievable when we work as a team, put in an incredible amount of effort, and persist. You have inspired me and so many others to aim higher, to work harder, and to see how much more we can accomplish here in Winthrop Public Schools. So congratulations to all of you. And as we could call your name, we'd like you to come up. Chloe Moody.
I'm sorry.
Olivia Hurry. Izzy Folsom. Eileen Manser. Reagan Littlefield. Eifer Clark. Ella Giles. Sienna Boucher. Karen Porgin. Sophie Schuman. Emily Kempton. Evelyn Mortimer. Kate Custon. Madeline Wagner. Lauren Miller. Raislyn Folsom. Sierra Harland. Reese Shaw. Gabby Jennings. Grace Grant. Okay, Grace Grant. Lynn Marie Cormier. Alexis Smith. Katie Tims. And Heather Goward. So, who's on here? So if the team members would like to leave, no one will take offense. But if you want to stay, you're always welcome to stay. I think they're going to go to the opportunity back there. And while they're doing that, I'm going to add Principal Randall and Nutrition Director Samantha Baldwin to come up and talk about the recent breakfast that they did at Winthrop Grace.
It's Mike.
Let me just check with Cory. Can you see them? Okay.
Well, so it was October 23rd. We hosted a family breakfast. And I'm not sure how it all came together. It was nothing less than a miracle. Mrs. Folsom was there with us that morning. But there were many, see you later ladies, congratulations. There were many adults who were there to help. We had ETA volunteers there to help, the whole nutrition staff was there to help. We had several staff members. But they were over, and I think your number is higher than what I originally had. But we had served over 340 people for breakfast. There were two different sessions. We had a 7:30 to 8:15, 8:15 to 9:00. And opposite of breakfast, you could go to the book van. So those two groups had, you know, they were passing like trains in the hallway, trying to get everybody organized. But it was so fun for all of us. And just to watch all the families sitting down together, eating together. It was the quietest I had ever heard a whole large group of kids eat. It's never like that in the cafeteria, I can tell you it isn't. But it was just so, so much fun. And I want you to add to it, because we had, we had a ton of fun, the two of us too.
We did. We didn't know how it was going to work out in the end. So we just knew we were going to roll with whatever came our way. And that's absolutely what we did. We ended up serving with adults 590 meals that morning. So it was successful. Yeah, it was, it was fun.
It was fun. There was one other thing I wanted to, Sam and her staff. Sam was all cool, calm, and collected. And I was, up until the numbers just kept going up and up and up and up. And then I thought to Sam, I said, I think we maybe should cancel this. I don't know. But she was like, no, we didn't, we forgot this. But the other piece that her staff did, not only did they serve everyone, we had it in the gym because we had such large numbers and excitement around having it. Her staff served breakfast for, it was 240 students that were still upstairs that needed breakfast. They also served every single kid a hot breakfast that wasn't part of the family breakfast that morning. And it was held a little differently. The kids keyed into the cafeteria, got their breakfast, because all of our breakfast cart volunteers were in the gym. So they got their breakfast and went back to class. But incredible, incredible job and well done and just a lot of fun with the community. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great teamwork. And I'm also going to add Principal Duport to come up and just talk about our first full committee dropout prevention meeting.
Sorry, a little tall and it's below my head. Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Foley said, on Monday morning, we had our first three dropout prevention committee meetings at the high school in the morning. I was pleased to have a number of folks present, not only the members of our standard high-risk RTI committee, but we had Beth DeRozier, who's a parent, Hunter Robbins, a student, and Pat Ladd, who's a community member, join us for that meeting. So scheduled an hour-long meeting, we were there for about 90 minutes. Had some great conversation. Really, our task was to go through a relatively short agenda. Spent a little bit of time talking about sort of the history of our RTI high-risk committee, the parameters around how we identify kids in those meetings. Mrs. Schoolius and I put together a little bit of data on our current students that are at risk. We looked at our graduation rates and dropout rates. Talked a little bit about some ideas about credit recovery, including on how that might impact the budget and potential position that Dr. Foley and I will likely be asking for in the budget season to help be more proactive than reactive. And we answered a lot of questions from the table and the community members. Spent a lot of time discussing some of the things that we do, some of the things that are in our control and out of our control, and how we can be more in touch with our students and identify them that are at higher risk sooner. And I think that the biggest thing that came out of that meeting was expanding our committee to include members from the grade school and the middle school, which we discussed yesterday at our Advent team meeting. Because, you know, sometimes when we get students at the high school, you know, they've been at risk for a number of years for a number of reasons. Maybe attendance, maybe grades, maybe, you know, some things going on in their life that are, you know, mental health concerns or other types of things. And, you know, talking to Principal Randall and Principal Smale, you know, there are those kids that exist in all three buildings. And I think the sooner you intervene with those kiddos, the better. Because sometimes by the time they get to high school, you know, there's, there's, there's just, it becomes a tougher road to climb if you can't catch those kiddos earlier. So I think that we're going to work at finding a really proactive approach in all three buildings. So I've done this work before. I've, you know, been at part committees where I'm disappointed at some of the work that we did, but I'm, this committee and the work that our folks and our community members want to do and our staff want to do, I'm very, very optimistic about the work ahead. And I'm really, really pleased about people's willingness to dig in and to really find every kid a pathway that allows them success.
Thank you so much. So many good things are happening this fall. And so that's just a snapshot of many things happening here at Winthrop Public Schools. Also want to report the hiring of Heather Rennier, WGS Secretary. Welcome to Heather. I also want to provide an update on our financial standing. In your packet on, I think, page nine, this is the monthly financial. And in the month of October, $170,000 out of the remaining unencumbered balance of $1.9 million was spent, leaving us with 1.7. And for the first half of November, we have spent $120,000. So now we're down to the 1.6. At this rate, it's really too close to call with all of the unknowns of where we will end at the end of the year. Nick Cool, the town finance director, and I are leaning towards going back to the voters to move the capital improvement funds to the general fund. But we're going to wait until January to make that final call. And in the interim, we're working with the town and school lawyers to determine what the next step would be if we decide to go in that direction. The administrative team is working diligently to only expend funds for essential items. They are using their student activity funds when they can rather than using our local funds. This is not a practice which we would normally use, but we're not really in normal budget times. The auditors are still working on last year's budget. I'm also happy to report that Lyons Electric and I have reached a verbal settlement about the fees from last year when we were renting the buses. They have agreed to pay all of those expenses. And I'm really happy about this. But we're just, right now, we're just waiting for that written agreement to sign off on that. We've also been test driving the electric buses. And our plan is to begin using them with students on Monday. Bus driver Peter Nielsen is ready and eager to drive the electric bus. And we will see how it goes. The administrative team continues to work on the FY '26 budget that's coming up. They'll be turning their budgets into me at the beginning of December. And then Nick and I will be meeting with them individually throughout the month of December. The administrative team has identified the following three focus areas for this upcoming budget. We want to establish a baseline budget that is super accurate. We are concerned a little bit about school safety. So you'll be hearing and seeing some things in the upcoming budget that addresses that. And of course, we want to continue to strive to improve the student achievement. And Principal Duport just talked about the position that you'll be seeing as I present the budget in January. Today, Sue Folsom did a special overview for board members who attended. We also had the facilities tour on October the 19th. And that was also very informative. And we'll be talking about the Rambla Road property later this evening on the agenda. And then the board's next learning opportunity will be December 11th at 2:10 at the high school with Principal Duport to learn about how they are helping our high-risk students and what they've implemented in the last couple of years around response to intervention. I also wanted to let you know that we hosted the MPA Class D Soccer Finals this year on our term, which brings in revenue for us and is also good for all of our local businesses. And that concludes my superintendent report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions or comments regarding the superintendent report? Okay, I'll head into my chair report. Regarding the facilities tour, on October 19th, Monica, Dr. Foley, and I were given a tour of the three Winthrop schools and the Rambla Road property that has been addressed by prior warnings. This tour was a little bit different from last year's because we had Joel Stoneton on hand to show us recent updates and improvements to the facilities as well as some of the things that have been going on. As the eyes and the ears of the district, I think it's important for us as board members to see what projects are being done as well as knowing what needs to be done so that we can make our informed decisions when it comes to budget. I was just really grateful to have Joel with us that day. I know he did about a couple hours on his Saturday to answer our questions. And I know that's a busy time here because it's football season. And I just, you know, appreciated that sacrifice that he made. Also, during the building tour, both Monica and I noticed that there are these really great posters that Alexis de Schoolius had put up informing students or passerby about the Title IX position and what that entails and what it means. And so I just found them helpful because that can be kind of an ambiguous title. And so those posters were great to read and to see at all the schools. Let's see. The next update I have for you is I met on the CATC Advisory Board on October 18th. We had a presentation from the Computer Technology Department. We discussed enrollment in the program and LD 436, an act to provide career and technical education to students with credit for high school graduation for work completed in career and technical education sectors and regions. Lastly, as people on that board, we were once again provided with a meal cooked prepared by the culinary students. So that's always a really special treat to have when I go there. In fact, they're, one of their staff people, it might be the director of the program, one, the chef of the year for me. So that's really neat to have the students being trained by someone of that caliber. My third update is about family breakfast. Huge thank you to Samantha and to Principal Randall and your teams, PT volunteers who made this event possible. It was really nice to see so many families enjoying a meal together. And it really set the tone for the year. And I know that the focus has been bringing parents in, collaborating with them, and making them feel welcome. I truly feel like we did that in that event, for sure. And so, yeah, I look forward to the one in the spring. And we'll see if we can tweak those numbers. My last update was a congratulations to our students, to student representatives who were inducted into National Honor Society. And to our new board member, Erica Dennett, who won her election. And she'll be joining us in January on the school board. And that completes the chair report. Oh, yes, and I did just get back. That's why I was a little bit not here as early as I usually am because I had attended a board education with Sue Folsom. And I'm still processing all the information. But it was such a wonderful educational opportunity to have as a board member. And I'm really going to be looking forward to letting the board know the things that I learned. And Sue has actually opened up that opportunity for members who are able to attend today to catch up with her at another time. Thank you so much. Okay, and that does complete my chair report. Thank you, Dr. Foley, for that reminder. So moving on to our student representative's report. And that's going to be done by Abigail today.
Okay, so this report covers the last four weeks. The fall season has officially concluded with some impressive accomplishments across our sports teams. The football team competed in the D-South Regional Final on Friday, November 15th, and were unfortunately defeated. Nevertheless, they have a strong season finishing with an 8-2 record. As previously recognized, field hockey had an outstanding season, securing the state championship for the fourth year in a row. Girls soccer finished their inaugural season with an 8-7 record and advanced to the first round of playoffs. The boys soccer team also reached the playoffs with a 4-83 record. Cross-country earned the title of Southern Maine Runner-Up, while the golf team made history as the first to ever qualify four individual players to the state competition. We also welcome the cheering team back after a 20-year hiatus and look forward to what they will accomplish in the future. Individually, our athletes excelled as well with 20 Academic All-Stars, 21 First Team All-Conference Athletes, 15 Second All-Conference Athletes, 10 Honorable Mention All-Star Athletes, 26 First-Time Letter Winners, and 33 Conference All-Stars. As the fall season wrapped up, we kicked off the winter season on November 8th, which includes skiing, wrestling, hockey, indoor track, and boys and girls' basketball. On the academic side, the first quarter concluded on November 1st. The Leadership Team planned Kindness Week, where students and staff celebrated by observing and performing different acts of kindness, fostering a positive and inclusive school environment. A special thank you to Senator Hickman, who served lunch to students in honor of Kindness Week, showing his support for our community. In terms of community involvement, the National Honor Society recently presented a $1,000 donation to the Winter Food Pantry through the Explore Act Health Program, funded by the Nursing Neighbors. The NHS has also already begun collecting food and money for the pantry, with donations being gathered at football games. On November 16th, members of NHS also met with programmers Lynn DeRene, planning a larger initiative this year aiming to secure a $2,500 grant for the food pantry. Last weekend, the outing club had a successful overnight camping trip from Mount Blue. And last but definitely not least, don't miss Drawn Club's production of Clue, which will be performed at the high school on Friday and Saturday at 7:00 and on Sunday at 3:00. Thank you very much for the board. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move into our committee report, starting with finance.
Yes, we met tonight. We did some warrants, signed some warrants. We did the rolls 9, 10, and 11. We did warrants 5B, 8A, 8B, 9A, 9B, 10A, 10B. We also had a discussion in our committee meeting about how we're going to have the administrators have their budgets in by December 2nd and looking at cutting and relocating some fines about possibly the proper mention at the high school, if we can find that. We also talked about the electric buses. And now we're going to be putting those back on the road on Monday.
Thank you very much, Tim. Policy?
Hello, I guess we have been meeting regularly. And we have some policies on old business that are going to form in the conversation. And also another cluster of new business. We are meeting again next Tuesday. Yes, next Tuesday, I know. We are meeting regularly and we'll keep you updated. And we're going to try to go through the sequence of unnecessary calls as soon as possible.
Thank you, Catherine. And negotiations?
That's me as well. So we are in the bus driver negotiation phase. And we are also meeting regularly on Thursdays and... and...
Thank you very much. Okay, heading into our administrator reports, they are attached in our packets. We don't have any presentations for us today. Are there any questions from the board or comments? Okay, moving on to old business, 5.1. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to repeal ACAB-R and adopt ACAB-R2, Employee's Sex Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedure, and JID, Pregnant Status.
Subway.
Okay, discussion?
No, Alexis is busy with Clue, and so this is your second read, so there's really no new information, other than we needed to be sure that we repealed that old original law.
Okay, perfect. Is there any discussion or comment from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Do we have unanimous vote? Thank you very much. Moving on to 5.2, I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the sale of the property on Rambla Road. The attached memo is on page 34 of your packet.
Subway. Second.
Okay.
So on October 19th, I think you've heard previously that we did have the facilities tour with Joel Stoneton, and we did visit this piece of property. And in your packet, there's a map of the lot 14 that we had been requested to look at and consider selling that particular lot. And it was great to go to the property and see the piece of land that was being discussed because we talked a lot about, once we saw that, and on your map, you'll see that that lot is the lot that borders each side of the road leading up to the middle and high school. And we really love the look of having that kind of, that road be tree-lined, and it just really makes for a beautiful kind of nature-rich entrance. We also talked about how in the future, it might be great to have some type of sidewalk or a bike path along Rambla Road for students and community members to utilize. And if we sold that lot, I really do not believe that that would be possible. And so for those two reasons, I do not recommend that we sell Lot 14 at this time. I know that the old abandoned house that's on that lot has been mentioned, and Joel is trying to arrange a time with the fire chief to more thoroughly investigate that matter.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Monica? I do have a comment. I initially, when I heard of this, thought, you know, why not? We're not using it. Why not go ahead and sell it? But I was really, my eyes were really opened when we were there touring the area with Joel Stoneton, and when I realized that regardless of what the potential, you know, owner of what his plans might be for that now, once that's out of our hands, that's out of our hands. And because if you look at the map, you'll see that that area runs right along Rambla Road. One of the things that I loved about our school is the way the road winds in, and you don't see the school until you make the turn, and you've got trees, and it's just beautiful. Beautiful landscape. I stood there and imagined a stripped bare, and I thought, oh, no, we can't do this. So that's mine, that's my feedback.
Thank you, Monica. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll speak to that as well. It's especially pretty that day, the sun is shining and all the foliage and it turned, and so it really is a private school feel to it. And also thinking about the road, that was recently purchased from the town, and so I'm not sure about pers, I'm not an expert here, but perspective, development, where our souls and, you know, having another road come out, Entertainer Road, just not sure what that potential could be, but it certainly gave me pause. And so I, I too concur with both of these opinions and so.
If there are no more comments, we can move to vote. All those in favor? Dominique? Unanimous? Uh, no, I'm sorry. Is that a no or extension? Okay, thank you, I agree. Okay, moving on to our new business, 6.1, Discussion Regarding the New High School Elective Proposal. Digital Photography is strictly their eyes, Geography, Epic Quest, and Alien Horizons, and Topic and Mathematics. And we'll have Jay Dufour come up and give us a overview.
So I have a few teachers here that would like to talk to you about their courses briefly, but before I ask them to come up, basically, we are continuing our theme of trying to diversify our courses at the high school and electives, and also combat, you know, a small school where electives after a couple of years get stale because kids are taking them. And then, you know, creating a bank of electives that students could take as we rotate some out, we rotate new ones in. Also, you know, my task for the staff was to find electives that were more high interest, that would interest kids in today's day and age, and some of our electives are dated, and they don't quite do that anymore, so we're trying to be a little active in that area as well. So I'd like to have maybe Tisha come up first and talk about her two electives.
Thank you for giving me a minute to speak about these two electives. The first elective is digital photography, and it seems a natural extension of the other media arts courses that I offer. I already offer video production, podcasting, and multimedia design, so this is one that I can easily work in. There would be some equipment costs, but not a great deal. I've done some initial numbers, and I could easily start the program with just under $2,000 to equip us with three cameras, three camera kits to start, which would be enough to get us off the ground. I'd also be teaching students how to use their phones and cameras as well, because that's the majority of what people use nowadays. I also have already started a Donors Choose to get one of the cameras that I would like to have, and have that, probably a third of that funded at this point already. And from that as well, I had another former student reach out to me just yesterday and say that his wife was a photographer, would like to donate one of her cameras to us as well, and he'd be talking about that to us. So the community support is there, because of all of that, and I think we could, and I'm always looking for grants, I'm always looking for ways to save money, but I just think it would continue to really support our students in skills that, whether you're going to be a digital photographer as a career or not, I think we all realize the importance of being able to take good pictures and promote our own businesses or whatever, whatever it is we're doing, even if it's just making a really awesome Christmas calendar for our families. So that's that course. The other course is my, it's a fancy name for sci-fi and fantasy course, literature course, and I think this would be a fun semester class to teach. A lot of students are interested in sci-fi and fantasy. It's not something that we do a ton of as part of our curriculum in our English classes because, hey, we all know there's so many different things to teach. We don't have time to dig in as much as we'd like to all of the genres, and whereas this semester, I see it as one that I can balance every other year with my sports literature class that I teach every couple of years that has a good following as well when I do offer that. And so this would be a way to offer students yet another chance to dig into some more specific literature that they're really interested in. Again, there would be some costs, obviously, to getting novels, but depending on the size, depending on how much that would be, and honestly, I see that as another way I could easily find funding of some kind to help out with that. If that's the only thing holding you up for voting yes, then please, I still want to hold you up. I'll find the money if I have to, because I think kids need these options. So, thank you.
Mr. P, come up and talk about the class that I want to teach when I retire, and that's geography.
Yeah, my course proposal is just a geography class, talking about physical geography, cultural geography, and political geography. I already have a lot of students begging me, even last year, for this class, and I think it would be great, you know. The big issue with American education is not a lot of states really require geography, and so if I get students interested in this, those students that, you know, beg to join Joy and just a lot of students just know more about the world, and, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
So before I have Ms. Armstrong come up, Mrs. Lenoir, who was our new social teacher this year, couldn't be here tonight. She travels quite a ways to come to work every day, so she asked me to pitch it for her, which I'm happy to do. Her semester class that she liked to offer is a course called History Through Their Lives. So the course is something that I actually worked with her on a little bit, has more of a global focus on people and cultures, not often covered in the history books, and exploring global events in history, but broadens the scope beyond just the American story, looking at diverse perspectives of people in history, like women, Native peoples, African-Americans, Asian Pacific Islanders, and more. So it's a passion of hers to really look at offering a course that isn't your sort of traditional Western civilization-focused type of history, and wanting to teach that in a more of a thematic approach, giving the students a say in some of the topics that they would pick for the semester. So we had, as history teachers, we had long conversations about this class, and it sounds like it's something that a lot of our students would be very interested in. And then finally, Ms. Armstrong, have her come up and talk a little bit about topics in math, maybe not so much an elective course, but really kind of addressing some of our needs and gaps in the upper-level math courses at the high school.
Thank you. So as a school, we do not require Algebra II as a commission for graduation. What we have run into in providing coursework for students is that if your third year, you choose not to take Algebra II, then your choices are very limited to what you do in the next, that year and the year after. So to address that issue, I am proposing a course that would basically be a bridge course from students from row one geometry to now get to a college-based course such as quantitative reasoning or technical mathematics. So this would be geared for students not intending to pursue a STEM pathway or a pathway that, it could also be a workforce pathway, something like that. What happens in the third year is that you lose engagement in the more abstract mathematics, and especially for learners who struggle to engage anyways. I wanted to propose a course that would utilize more hands-on, project-based assessments, also giving them some voice in choosing modules that would be of interest to them. So the goal would be to keep the rigor high and keeping the standards focused and addressing standards that are now going to take you to the, ideally quantitative reasoning, that's what I'm thinking, quantitative reasoning would be your senior course. So basically, looking at the standards of quantitative reasoning, addressing them in the junior year in a more applications-based presentation. Thank you, Dan.
Yes, moving on to board questions.
I have a question on the, I'm sorry, on the math. Would you go into quantitative reasoning to some statistics with that?
So currently at my school, quantitative reasoning is, can, statistics is a course they're teaching this year, and it had been a gap since it had been taught in the past. And students who take statistics this year typically have already taken Algebra II and maybe have even taken pre-calc. Quantitative reasoning exists primarily for CP students as they're, after they've taken Algebra II, and then they'll take quantitative reasoning their senior year. This would be a pathway for students to approach quantitative reasoning strengths and standards without getting caught up, I guess these aren't the right words, but like getting lost or disengaged in kind of the abstractness of Algebra II. And I've attended some national conventions regarding modernizing Algebra II, and colleges across the nation not really looking at as that as a prereq for their coursework, and colleges creating pathways within their schools to provide learners the math that's appropriate for their end game, really. So rather than hitting them over the head with algebra for so much, let's, like, relook at the value of mathematics in lots of different spheres, hopefully, and create that engagement and then prepare them for that quantitative reasoning course.
Thank you for bringing quantitative reasoning. I think it's a great, fun way for kids to learn, and it definitely kind of pulls in Algebra I to II, and a lot of colleges are starting to push that into their curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you. And Monica?
Oh, Becky. I just, I was, what did you hear more? That sounds really pretty exciting, actually, so I wonder if you've got any projects in mind about some of that practical application or what you've been thinking about?
Well, I've got some ideas on the proposal. Some of the things that I thought students might enjoy are like sports statistics, like going to basketball game and being responsible to, you know, count rebounds and do all that stuff, and then kind of run the tests with them or present those stats. I think that would be fun. Thank you. I have recently, in my current quantitative reasoning course, if I have ours out for a day or two, I have connected them to this material called The Code, and it's really exciting. Researcher who finds patterns in nature and like, kind of like connects patterns to why music sounds good and certain ratios that make it sound good, and those are the same ratios that used to be in art that's beautiful, and like, all these like really cool connections. So I thought a unit on patterns and kind of connecting that with like math and practice. And then one of the fun things that I did in college for math and history
And then one of the fun things that I did in college for math, in history of math, was look at systems of counting throughout time and how like you had, like, some, someone has like the base six system versus a base ten system. And so like, getting students to recognize that, you know, the way that we do the numbers isn't necessarily like magical or scripture. It's like, it's a design and we use within that model, but there's lots of models. And then that could lead you to like binary code or something like that, and connect it.
Thanks, that actually sounds fun from a non-math person.
That's amazing, actually.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Yes, I just want to comment, I think this all sounds really super exciting. I'm really glad that you all took the time to come out and explain what you're thinking about, because even, you know, the reading of the whole description, and I can see in your face and the way you're talking about it, that you're passionate about. I wouldn't get a list of those books to, what are you reading, definitely. But yeah, that sounds, I'm stoked, yeah.
I'm really excited too. I'm also really excited about the global focus on culture. I think it's really valuable, we don't get enough of that to understand different parts of the world. The breadwinner is amazing, so I hope they would kind of consider that a little bit more. But I'm kind of excited, so I think these are really great. I'm glad that we're going into a whole new focus, bringing some excitement back to the kids. Quantitative reasoning is great, especially for kids that understand patterns and follow patterns. I understand that program presented, and I think visionary students are gonna love that quite a bit. So I'm excited about all these programs. I love this new direction our schools are going in. Seems like teachers are alive and hitting the floor with everything that they've kind of been having under their feet, and the kids are loving, so thank you.
Monica?
Do you have a quick question for Principal Dufour? And then is, do any of these, I understand they're each semester long courses, is that right?
Thomas and Math would be your long course.
Okay, do any of them count for academic credit, or are these strictly electives?
Thomas and Math would count for math credit, the other ones would be elective credits.
Okay, I have a quick comment. I guess it's really nice to see the students taking the initiative and then the staff taking that feedback and really coming up with something that, you know, they're initiating. I see that as a really positive thing. And also, finding the non-traditional ways to fund in class is really great. Thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it. And I think that's it. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. While we don't have a vote, while we are not voting on this, you know, we'll do that next time. It is good to hear the feedback and the support from the board. Okay, moving on to 6.2. I'll entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding remote school days. The attachment memo is on page forty-nine in our packets. And we'll give some time over to Dr. Foley to explain that a little bit. Oh yes, let's do the motion.
So.
Second.
Okay, end of discussion.
Thank you.
We are recommending that first two snow days are true snow days for students and staff to enjoy. But after that, if we can predict the storm a day in advance, we will call for a remote learning school day. This will be communicated to parents by one o'clock the previous day. And we need to be able to send meals home with the students who need them. If the board approves this recommendation, we will send out a communication to parents about expectations around that day, and that's included in your packet on page fifty-one. Big board packet tonight. And we also have the principals here this evening. If you have specific questions about the learning on those days. Principal Smell is at a conference, but I think she's on Zoom.
She was.
She was. Oh, she had to leave, okay. So hopefully, all your questions will be about the grade school and not high school. And currently, our last school day with no snow days is June twelfth.
Okay. Any questions or comments, maybe?
The only thing I'd like to make sure that we kind of acknowledge is the students that are in high honors and AP classes, because sometimes days off really impact them, make things more challenging.
Thank you, Ivy. Any other board feedback? Monica?
Yes, I'm pretty excited about this compromise. It was one that we really wrestled over, and a lot of our families had some pretty strong opinions. And I think that it marches right down the middle. I do take, you know, what you just said about AP classes. And I realize that many of the students there are pretty self-motivated. And I imagine the snow days, they could, you know, things they could do or wouldn't do.
Thank you, Monica. Any other board feedback? Okay, I did want to, so I did receive from some parent feedback via email. I know there was a bit of confusion about two versus a three-day remote dating proposal. And so I just wanted to ask Dr. Foley to explain the budget implications about that decision, the two versus the three.
Yes, and I, you know, my recommendation especially for this year is to do the two regular snow days versus the three. And part of that is because of our tight budget this year. We are trying not to go, if we had no remote days and we had five, I think, snow days or more, we might go until June twentieth. And if we go to June twentieth, then we have to pay many of our employees the additional vacation day, primarily that's our bus drivers and our ed techs and nutrition workers. And for the ed techs, I know you were curious about what is the cost. So this isn't the exact cost, because I just took kind of the middle range today when I received your question, Alicia. And so it's around eight thousand dollars a day that we would have to pay additionally if we ended up needing to pay for June twenty. So that did play into, because of this current tight budget, trying to not go until the twentieth.
Thank you very much for that. Any other board comments? So for me, I do like the clear guidelines and expectations. For the remote learning days, that's catered to the needs of each school. And those are found on fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three of our packets. And I just want to say thank you to the ATEMs and Dr. Foley for your work on this. I know that that took some time, coming up with something that's specified for each school, and I just really appreciate that. Thank you. Quick question? Yes.
I know this will be out on the website so that parents could see that, because I know there were a lot of parents and a lot of discussion about this. And I think that a lot of people will be very pleased to see this layout, so we'll leave it on the website.
Yes, and we'll probably have, Megan, who will push it out also on the, if you know, will receive feedback about that on the Facebook site.
And just to be clear, I guess for this year, we're voting on a two-day recommendation, but it could potentially change next year to a three-day, which was initially proposed.
Yes, and also, I think it's important to know that, you know, the remote days only work when we can call it in advance, and that's not very often, honestly.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, all those in favor of the superintendent's recommendation to, for the remote school days? You have a miss vote, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.4, to approve the following policies and procedures for first reading. Me? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. I take that back, I skipped. Six point three, a discussion regarding the new school board protocols, which are on page fifty-five of our packets.
This is just something that, you know, previous districts we had utilized. And what made me think about it was just that we're getting ready to do a training with our new board member. And so I've been creating a binder to kind of go over with Alicia with that person. And this just is kind of our standard, you know, what we think we should be focused on in all board meetings. And I'm, you have it in your packet, I'm not gonna read through it. But, and we don't really need a vote. I just guess, you know, we could have some discussion, whether you think it's a good idea, whether you'd like to have any of them changed. And I just wanted that feedback before I did the official training with our new board.
I think it's focused and succinct, and I agree with all of its points. I love that children's interest comes first is number one. Thank you, Monica. Any other board feedback?
Ivy?
I'm really excited for this, I've read through it. And as we go along, we can enhance it, but I think it's about time that we put this board together and be the amazing pillar between the community and our schools and our teachers and our students.
Thank you, Ivy. Any other questions or comments? Now, 6.4, to approve the following policies and procedures for first reading of a lightning motion.
So, second.
I think we're all, we have many people presenting for this. But first, I am presenting for a few of them. So let me just start with the BED. This is a board policy that we need in order for people to be able, for people, the board members to be able to participate remotely, which we know that at our last board meeting, we had a need for that. And so this is just a standard MSMA policy for that. Do we want to take questions as we go, since there's so many?
Sure. Two questions regarding policy of BED, the remote participation in school readings. Okay, seeing that, move to IBD.
Okay, so this is one that, as we're trying to update our policies, this is just one of the oldest policies that is needing updating. And there's just some minor revisions in this, primarily it's around including the guiding principles from the learning results and ensuring that students can show achievement of content standards through ways other than like classroom assessments or standardized tests. So it includes portfolios or performances. So those are the two big changes in that.
Questions? Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the next one, JFABD.
Okay, and Megan White is on Zoom. We get into a lot of questions on this, because she's our homeless liaison, but was unable to attend in person. She has written a memo to you explaining to you the biggest changes, and that is to really separate out the policy from the procedure.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments? Moving on to JFABD, dash, R.
The same one that I just talked about. That we're separating out the regulations from the policy.
Okay, so moving on to JKAA, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion.
And also the R and S, possible speak to both of those. And she's also done a bag of a memo that is in your board packet.
And I'm probably gonna speak a little bit further, but, so good evening, chairperson, last name, members of the school board. I'm excited to finally be standing in front of you requesting the first reading of these policies. JKAA, which is the Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion, and JKAR, which is the Physical Restraint and Seclusion Administrative Policy. It's really the procedure. I'd also like to receive some feedback this evening from you before I present JKAE, which is the Incident Reporting Form. Prior to reviewing those policies, I would like to share with you that when I met with the policy committee on October twenty-first, we reviewed policies IHBAA, which is referral, pre-referral of students with disabilities, referral, and general education interventions. IHBAR, referral, pre-referral administrative procedure. And IHVAC, you do not have those in your packet, so don't look for those. We, I requested to review these with the policy committee as part of the special education monitoring requirements that we're currently participating in with the main DOE. This is a process that's conducted every two to six years, depending upon the determination made from the monitoring process. This is the process that the main DOE uses to meet the general supervision requirements outlined in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. These three policies, along with the policies I'm presenting tonight for first reading, are reviewed as part of our monitoring. There were no recommended changes to those policies, PI policies. The only policy that we do need to look at is our restraint and seclusion policy. So if you have questions specifically about the chat client or the referral, pre-referral, I'm happy to entertain those at another time, but there were no changes, and we did review those. Excuse me, I believe in twenty-two was the last time we reviewed those. So as we've spoken at previous meetings, the law and rule for restraint and seclusion processed at the state level and the board, the board had agreed to table this until our rule and law had been finalized. That approval happened some time ago, and so I've been patiently waiting to get these on our agenda so that we are in full compliance with the law and the rules. I will say that we have been meeting those expectations of the law, even though our policy was not aligned. The memo shared in your board packet had the details of the major changes of the law resulting in the need to update our policy. The biggest changes are related to definitions, what schools can use physical restraint or seclusion, and the meeting requirements following the use of restraint and seclusion. In addition, the incident reporting form needs significant revisions to meet the compliance of that law. And we'll talk a little bit about that at the end. I would encourage the board to adopt a policy JK, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion and the accompanying procedure JKAR, which is now titled Procedure on Physical Restraint and Seclusion. These were provided from MSMA for us as they are written, because those are compliant with the law. I'm just looking, sorry. So any questions on those policies?
Monica?
Yes, what program do we currently use? I know when I went to Psych, I had to ask, I was a MAFY instructor. I know some schools have used MAF, what do we use?
So the current system that we are using is, we have two in place. We use Safety Care, which is compliant with the law, as well as, and I'm gonna mispronounce the name because it's fairly new. I believe it's pronounced U-Caru. It's a social-emotional, I'm trying to think of the term that they gave us. Is it an acronym? Can you spell it? It's U-K-E-R-U, I believe. But that's a trauma-informed practice. But they're very similar in nature. We do have two trainers for Safety Care in the district. And one of them can bury our behavior interventionist is the other. And we have two trainers for the U-Caru, which is Melanie Bocheing, our high school, middle school, high schools teacher, and can bury our behavior. and can be our behavior interventionist.
Any other questions from the board? Ivy?
I have a question. That, U-Ceru, I'm not too familiar with that. Is that something that, I know that there's been some work with Edwin Urban. Is that something like they would recommend, especially when they deal with a lot of children who come with a lot of trauma and?
So it is a fairly new practice and name. We are probably one of very few, maybe a dozen districts, that have adopted the U-Ceru approach. So I don't know if Edwin Urban is even familiar with that, to be honest with you.
Do you mind if I reach out? I'd like to find some more information about that, just from my history of working with children.
Yes, Monica? So I'm assuming you tell me that as Director of Special Ed, you were the one that chose, made that choice for U-Ceru and for Safety Care?
So Safety Care was in place prior to my arrival in the district. It's something that I used in my previous district and the district before that. It's very well known and it is probably the highest level of compliance with the law that the DOE provides to us. U-Ceru being something new, I learned of this from my regional partners in the districts around us and felt that we had a need for the trauma-informed practice as well, and that could only supplement what we were doing.
Fantastic. I was not able to make our meeting, but I hope this is something that we might be able to discuss.
Sure. Any other comments from the board? Just a quick question. You were looking for feedback from the board regarding procedure or the?
The form. So this is not the procedure, it's actually the reporting form. So one of the things that we are required to do annually is to report the number of restraining and seclusions. And I have the form wrote here, so it's not.
It's not in the file.
It's not in the form.
Thank you.
Because we weren't technically reviewing it. But I wanted you to have the information that we're required to provide to the department and what we collect. The form that is in policy currently has not been used since well before my time in the district. And the form that we currently, well, I shouldn't say currently. The form that we were using was not compliant with the law. And so we sat down and we created a new document that aligns with the law, but it is an electronic document. And this is what I would like some feedback on from you folks. Collecting the data to report out is only as good as the data that you're provided. So when we collect electronic data that is stored in one place, it has a date stamp on when it happens. And we can go back to that and use that to graph data and what have you. We can filter and all of that. We have found that it has, we've been piloting that for the last probably four or five months. And we're finding that we're getting quicker information to the people that need to have it versus having a paper form that comes in a yellow envelope that gets sent to my office that I then review. We become able to have it on our website, and anyone in the district has access to that so that they can fill out that report when it happens. So I wanted to share with you what the reporting requirements were. But what I would like feedback is, are you comfortable with having an online reporting system? And this will not be what the form looks like. I am working with our technology department. Cam G. Forehead shared with me that he is very willing to work with me to get this into a form that looks way more professional than Google Docs can print out for me.
Okay.
Can I ask if I have a question?
Yes, Monica?
Yeah, so about the electronic form, I just presumably it will, it will be encrypted and meet all purpose standards and so forth? Is that?
I'm like looking across the room right now to Corey, who's from Technology. That's something that I would have to ask. But yes, that's, what would my hope would be? Is that everything we're getting is confidential and it's only coming to the people that need it?
Right.
That would be my look. It's time to have to make sure that we make those reports.
Yes. Thank you to Ivy.
My concern is confidentiality. Will this be taken more of a case management approach where only initials are used, tightly encrypted, using more of a pie system so you're not going into details? Does that reaches a lot of confidentiality? It could also be stigmatized into children if it's not accurate and cause a lot of problems. So my concern is more protecting the child and the family. And especially knowing, since you're doing case management stuff, I know that things can get interrupted, hacked, sent to the wrong person. So are we looking at ways to really ensure that and following a more strict procedure like the case management and using names like initials? Is that what we're looking more for?
So typically, the current form that we have is the student's actual name that's on there. It is required to be sent to the family. So the student that is involved in the restraint or seclusion, not anyone else, it goes to that family. It's also part of the student record. And so if there's any disagreement, that would be, have a conversation that we would have. But it's the school's method of notifying families what occurred, what led up to it, what was the outcome.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with, you know, maybe the wrong emails wrong, went to the wrong person.
We wouldn't be sending these electronically to families. These would be, the electronic recording form is only for the internal process to get it to my office so that we can get those forms, the actual printed form, the one that looks a little more professional that Cam's going to help me create, out to the family.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for answering those questions. At this time, we are actually voting on to approve them, to approve the policies for the first reading. We'll later have a, we can have a discussion about the forms after. But let's get this vote. All those in favor? Okay, any other vote? Thank you very much. Does the board wish to discuss further the use of the forms? Or can we get our, our, I should answer?
I feel like we can wait till it's been, you know, put together. This is just the first read, so.
This is the policy and that would be separate.
The form is actually not part of your first read. I would have to bring back to you JKAE, which is the form. And before we go through that process of actually creating a form from the electronic version, I would like to sort of get your blessing to say it's okay.
Okay, yes. So do you have what you need from the board as far as form, what you need to do?
I think so. I'm seeing some head shakes that you're okay with an electronic version as long as the confidentiality is maintained and that happens. So we'll verify all of that prior to presenting a form, which I will break to the policy committee as soon as we get that done.
Thank you, Sue, for presenting those policies. Moving on to. Of our new business. That wraps up our new business. Moving on to section seven, public comments. If there's anyone in the row, please step up, give us your name.
My name is Bruce Burns. I'm a resident of Winthrop. I have two lovely grandchildren that are in the elementary school, and I'd like to speak specifically about the electric buses. Many of the board members, and maybe I missed something, but I have attended just about every school board meeting for the past two years. Prior to Becky's appointment as interim superintendent and pretty familiar with the situation. When did the board decide to utilize the electric buses after stating unequivocally that children were in peril and in danger if something failed on these buses, which had occurred before despite the assurances from Lion Electric that they were up the snuff? I mean, a state inspection works on a nineteen eighty-five dump truck, not specifically an electric bus. So stating that the buses are in inspection to put our children in peril, I'd like to know when you all voted to utilize these buses? I mean, this is bad. And I want to know if it's a board decision because the superintendent, the interim superintendent, works for you. So you guys must have voted sometime, and maybe I missed that vote, to start to utilize these buses. The last I saw, you were going to test drive them, but now we're putting them into service to haul kids around. And I don't want my grandchildren in peril for safety over these issues that are very complex, that I have no understanding of, except they stopped in the middle of the road. And I think it's really very difficult with good conscience. I want to go on topic record that you're all responsible in signing off on the use of these buses. It's your decision, not Dr. Foley's. You've decided to utilize the electric buses because I missed that meeting. I just, you should reconsider this very, very strongly. It's not about the money, it's about the safety of our children. And you're all elected officials, and you're all going to be held responsible should anything, God forbid, happen. And being somewhat of a betting man, I would say the chances are pretty good that something bad is going to happen to these buses again, and hopefully not with children on board. And with that, I thank you very much for your time. But you should reconsider it because if not, you're all being misled. And you're all two-faced because you can't deal with the decisions that you've already vehemently opposed with the electric bus usage. So think about that because the superintendent works for you. You don't work for the superintendent. I would also like to know, Dr. Foley is the interim superintendent. What are the job sources and the discoveries for a permanent superintendent for the new public schools? Maybe you can report that in your next agenda.
Thank you, Bruce. I'll address your first question.
Certainly.
I do want to just cite that we have been test driving those buses, if that was something that was reported.
I agree with you.
Okay.
But now, all of a sudden, just casually mentioned, oh, we're going to put them in service on Monday. And we're going to haul kids.
I appreciate your concern.
Was that not just stated? Am I incorrect in that statement? I had no pre-commission that they were going to be utilized. I thought they were still in the test driving series. And there was an issue, according to your packet, that the overtime was being, you know, it was too much to pay people overtime to go out and test drive them hard. So it was being casually done. But I just want to make sure that it goes on record that it's your decision to put kids on these buses. Are we all in agreement on that? For the record, for the newspapers, for the press, for everybody to know that it's your decision to put children in peril on buses that are not tested? And I think two of them are duds in there, metal, big old charging blocks.
Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments, whether on Zoom or in room? Now we'll go ahead and close our public comment section. Moving on.
Looks like the guest who's wanting to speak. Okay, I also have a question about the buses.
Yes. Go ahead, the floor.
Yes, please state your name.
Yep, Jim Steele. A community member of Winthrop. I do have some concerns with the buses. Is Josh Wheeler available to answer questions this evening?
We do not have, we're looking for your comment.
Yes, I have questions. I've been wanting Josh's opinion. He's been here since conception of this. And I voted that we try these buses. I just want his opinion and what assurance from Lion Electric. I know they're paying us back for the loaning or the leasing of the buses that we had to replace. But what's the assurance from Lion Electric that we have that they're fit and are operating as said?
We can take your question and get back to you. We do not have our transportation director in the room.
Okay, what, as Dr. Foley talked, Lion Electric, what's gone through the testing that's been done to assure that these are going to work properly?
This is a public comment section, so we're just taking public comment at this time. But I would refer you to the superintendent for questions or the director of transportation. We can email them or call them. This is public comment.
Yeah, but that's, it's, we to ask the question, you guys probably can come up with an answer. For me, as the public, asking the question, making statements. As Bruce just did, I just, can Dr. Foley speak towards that? And since she's there, could she speak towards what she found out from Lion Electric?
At this time, this is public comment, so we can take your comment. And as, it's in our policy that we are not to respond or have a conversation during public comment time, but we can certainly, you know, give you the person to reach out to.
Yeah, I would really like to, you know, I have a large concern of putting you guys talk about children, talk about children's safety, progressive children here on the school board, because I heard this at the home meeting tonight. And this just seems a little bit out of scope. I'm not comfortable with it either. I'm not comfortable with these buses right now. I mean, I am a town council member. I did vote to have these, you know, try these buses out. But as we found out last year that they really weren't that successful. And I am concerned. You know, I really, really bother that maybe we haven't tested these out appropriately. And I really, getting some type of statement from Lion Electric stating some assurance on the safety of these buses, I don't, I'm not favor, I don't think anybody should be a favor of putting these buses back in production.
I appreciate it.
And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much for your comment, Jim. Are there any other public comments, whether in the room or on Zoom at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close our second public comment section and move on to item eight, school board comments. Monica?
Okay, so I'm not engaging in discussion with Mr. Burns or Mr. Steele, but I think they make excellent points. And I have to say, I am not comfortable with this. And I'm going to suggest that we hold off on using those buses until we can have further discussion and until the, you know, the public can make their concerns known. I don't know myself. Sorry, but I don't know exactly what's been done. Josh shouldn't have an opportunity to speak to it tonight. And, you know, Mr. Burns and Mr. Steele, I think they make really good points. And it's not something that I can support starting then on Monday.
Thank you, Monica. Are there any? Ivy?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I did attend the fall sports award night. Very proud of all our students. I am thankful for all our staff and coaches and parents and the booster club. I think it's a great thing. I also just want to share that without the community's support, those sports aren't possible for our students. And I would really like to see if we can come together and do more fundraising as a community to really help that. That's a lifesaver for a lot of students to do sports. Having the blessing to watch the cheerleading team and the amazing stuff that they brought together with the high school students and from two different districts is amazing. Building the trust between the teens. Being thrown up in the air is a huge trust with your peers, to be fought on the way down. And, you know, for them to work together to do that is amazing. So I just want to put out there for the communities, consider, maybe get involved and coming together to do more fundraising for our, all our sports. I also want to propose, see about proposing a policy for school board members. I know we have policies on bullying, harassment, sexual harassment for school board and students. I would like to see about putting a policy for school board members and for their children. Just from experience, I think that it would be nice to be able to safeguard and have someone to protect school board members and their children. Another thing I'd like to talk about is seeing about, maybe discussing putting a wish list for needs and donations for our educational materials and equipment. A lot of, we have an amazing amount of retired teachers in our community that I have sat with when I went to Warnocking. They would love to volunteer, so maybe adding. They would love to volunteer, so maybe adding in something with them being able to volunteer that teachers can utilize as great resources, big CEOs that can bring a lot in. So, I don't know if that's something they look at to our website, so if teachers have specific needs or somebody has camera equipment or sports gear, there's a spot on our page to be welcoming to give and receive for our students and community. And also, I just want to share my opinion on the school buses. I am really concerned. There's been a lot of back and forth and misinformation through the, through the school years with school buses. I have sat and gone through many of our recordings for a couple of different reasons and there has been a lot of contradiction in stuff that has been presented and shared. Also, there's been misinformation provided to the newspaper, saying that there was no students on the bus when it first stopped working, which if you hear the recordings of the school, it specifically states twice, one time, it was acknowledged and on record that there were students on the bus, which there were, and the second time was just one of our evidence. So, for that to have been misrepresented in the paper, I think that is concerning. Transparency is huge. It's a great way to do trust, integrity. I mean, if that's what our community strives for, I think that we really need to have that. There's not a lot when it comes to the school buses. I am concerned about it. It's new technology. There are a lot of lives. These kids do not have seat belts. When, I know, sitting behind the wheel of these school buses, once it starts sliding, there is no stopping. So, and you don't even have to apply the brake very hard and these buses will still slide. A lot of people say the weight makes a difference. It does not. So, I am really, really concerned, especially with how icy our roads get. Electric and water and ice don't sit very well. So, I do have a lot of concerns, especially where it has been stated that there has been water sitting on the battery box. So, I would like to have more information on this. I don't remember approving to put them on the road. I know I would want my children or anybody else's children on this and especially if I have to make, approve it or not, I want more information. I mean, these are children's lives. So, if we can add that to the agenda so that we can bring in public comment and discuss this a little further before we post students on these buses.
Thank you, Ivy. So, can we bring a motion to the table now to put off the use of the buses until after we've been able to have a discussion? Been able to hear directly from Josh, the public's been able to hear from him exactly what has been done, exactly what they're seeing, what, as Mr. Burns said, you know, what his assessment is. And the public has an opportunity to come to a meeting to let us know. Ken, so let me simplify that. I would like to make a motion that we do not begin using any of the electric buses until after this has been addressed and decided at a future meeting.
I don't think we need a motion for this, but maybe you'd like some advice?
I would not entertain a motion for this because we haven't given advance notice to the public. So, I would agree with Alicia on this. If the board is, is, I don't think this requires a motion. I think we have heard the concerns from the board members and we can take that under advisement. But to do a motion when we haven't given advance notice, I do not think that's good practice. But if, but I do not have any problem waiting to put the buses back on the road. If the board would feel more comfortable, and I guess that would be, you know, not a formal vote, but just, you know. I don't, I, you know, postponing it a week or two is so that I can talk to Alicia about this. I'm fine to do that, but I just would be nervous about putting a motion where we haven't had it on the table.
Yeah, I, but I previously stated I don't believe it needs a motion. I think it's something that we could certainly consider adding to the agenda for my time to have a discussion and getting some advice. Ivy?
Yeah, I'd like to also get some advice from our fire chief who's had some training on electric battery fires and components, as well as our state officials on that as well.
So, was it just, we're just pressuring this now? Did you say state officials?
Yeah, the state fire, yeah, as well as our, because they're the ones that have to address the fire. We don't have, they have to be called in. I listened to the, what do you call it? The radio. And I know sometimes it takes quite a bit for our personnel to get to like fires or accidents or scenes, especially if there's multiple calls in the area. Very short of a lot of those resources. So, that's also very concerning. So, it'd be nice to know to have more information.
I guess what I would suggest is that we just put this on a future agenda because I don't think that, I don't think this is the time to get into a discussion about this. And I also think that if we're, if the board as a whole needs to weigh in before talking about bringing in a fire chief or something like that, so I really do think it's a discussion about what direction.
All right, Monica, just.
I just wanted to say, so I understand that procedurally it's not consistent with Robert's rules of order to make the motion, but I feel very reassured of, Dr. Foley, by your saying, we will not put the buses out until we have the opportunity to discuss and examine this more closely at the next meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ivy, did any of the board members have comments, concerns, or our student representatives?
I guess I'm just sort of confused at how came, how the conclusions came to that they were gonna move back into service. Is that, like, do I have to mention something?
Yes. Right, yes. Thank you for your question. And what we'll do is we'll add it to our agenda to discuss and maybe kind of get more into those details. I appreciate your question. Okay. At this time, we're going to, here up to enter into a session. We thank you all for your attendance and we ask that those who've been invited to stay behind. So, student representatives, you all, please stay with us.